Order seven zero five. Hi folks, we're bringing this meeting to order. So, this is a public hearing. But we do have some business to take care of with the one applicant's. We'd like to hear that person's application first and take care of business for the bunnies. But for your reference though, if you would like, there are some printed copies of the draft commercial.
Hasn't changed since the last.
I think it has not changed. So, first order of business, the bunnies, Leo and Rose. Does everybody have a copy of the application?
Is it just two pages?
Yeah.
Leo, Leo just bought the property on Pinkham's Cove that was formerly Tang's house, if you know where that is.
Yeah.
What his proposal is to actually tear the house down and replace the house, the exact same size on the same foundation. Cause the foundation's in decent shape.
Yeah, so wood, concrete.
And also to take the roof off the garage and replace the roof on the garage. Not tear down the building, but that part of it we do.
And so, this is a note before we.
How much.
Yep.
Forty feet.
It's not formal as well.
Take it the deck is gonna be new too, that's been replaced as the existing deck.
Correct.
Okay.
How many stories is this now and how many stories is it gonna be afterwards? It's one story.
The same square footage.
Right, we're not changing the.
Eleven eighty-six square feet and then the deck is three six.
So that's why the floor area and the footprint are designated as the same?
Yes, same foundation.
Basically, the garage, the roof is gonna come off completely and then the new.
Yeah, it's sort of a flat roof now and I wanna, you know, take, ask though like a curtain on it, take that off and then just put trusses.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There's probably a four twelve or five twelve there, so yeah, maybe four feet for the height for the garage.
Take it the garage right now is only, what, ten feet or so?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, you know, the garage is structurally sound. It's just that they're, you know, it's pretty much flat roof. So, yeah, pitch roof on it. And then the house is actually solid too, it's just that it's, you know, it's old enough and inefficient.
The area that's designated as front on your drawing, I don't know if it's a porch or it's towards the road, not towards the lake. Is that gonna be in that same location when you rebuild it?
Correct, yeah.
Same, that's same size too.
Yeah. That was included.
And likewise for the, uh, the deck, the.
Correct.
Partial wraparound.
Yeah.
In terms of got the same dimensions, except it's new.
It's just now, you know, when Leo looked at it, he said, no, it's probably easier to rebuild than update.
Well, unfortunately, when you have old, you always have old, no matter what you do.
Right.
You know, and.
Whether it's wire, you plumbing, whatever, insulation.
You know, by, by time you cut it out and you do everything, the roof on the house is actually gotta come off too. So, at that point, really that last, you know, all the windows and doors are like.
Old.
Old.
And you're not, you're not planning any earth moving, is that correct?
Nope, nope.
And the septic system, what's the status on that Gary?
It's existing, it's, it's up here by the road.
Yeah, uh, it doesn't need to be upgraded or anything.
No, they're not changing the number of bedrooms or anything? And the final product, um, speaking of roofs, we mentioned before, both on the house and the garage. Which way will, um, that be oriented? So, will the gable ends be towards the lake or towards the road or?
Correct, they'll be exactly the same.
Okay, so, so then the drip edges, one would be towards your neighbor and the other towards the garage?
Correct.
And then on the garage side, would it be?
The same.
Same orientation as with the house?
Correct.
Okay.
It will stop with.
Also, okay, so you use gutters?
That raises a, a good point, is how to deal with the stormwater coming off the, the two new roofs now.
Right.
Uh, normally we require as a condition of approval, dealing with that storm weather by means other than by gutter, so it's not being directed to the lake. Either, um, you know, drip line infiltration areas or rain gardens or something like that, so that that water is not making its way to the lake anymore. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, but if, if not, we'll approve it with a condition requiring that.
We're not, yeah, the, you know, the roof on the, on the house is, I mean, it's a pitched roof now, so.
Right.
We'll do whatever we need to do.
I mean, easiest usually is for, it seems like for most people is to put the infiltration gravel along the drip line.
Crushed stone.
Crushed stone.
So, you prefer that over, uh, gutters?
Yeah, 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 cause gutters usually collect all the water and direct it at a fast rate towards the lake, which can't infiltrate into the ground.
Yeah.
It works out well, I think from a building perspective, I think, may, maybe ask Mr. Alexander, but a lot of people wonder why they did gutters after they did.
What about the soil composition? If it's hardpan, clay, and, uh, then all that water's gonna go to the lake anyways if it pitches in that way. It's all gravel right there.
The way, the way these systems are built though, it, it, you have sand underneath the crushed rock, uh, so, you know, it infiltrates it. It, it's not gonna run across the surface unless you have a really severe storm event.
Yeah, well, I had a situation, every rainstorm, did it without gutters. The gutters at least controlled where it went.
Yep.
And I was able to divert it away from the lake.
So, you had success in that situation?
Yeah. What a sister.
Yep.
And that's fine if you have someplace, you know, that's not lawn, that you, where the water can infiltrate, but a lot of people don't. Particularly in small lots like this where you're right on top of the lake.
Sometimes you can send it into the woods.
Yeah, you can send it into the woods if you had that option, but most of the projects we see don't have that option.
The idea of the, in my opinion, the idea of the sister is an excellent.
I don't, I don't have any concerns as such. The only concern I, uh, it's, it's not really, I guess it's a concern or whatever, is that I would feel more comfortable if, uh, Leo would be able to put on the application that, uh, the, we don't have any, there's nothing on here that shows what the vertical or side view or what the house is gonna look like, so, right now it just says replace it, uh, with same footprint or whatever, but it would be, in my mind, be good if Leo could put on there that the dimensions of the house, walls or whatever, would be the same and it'll be one story structure so that we.
Height, uh, and profile would be the same.
If we can get the profile on here, I'm absolutely no problem.
Yeah, right, or, or photos.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you want follows up with success now?
Well, or, or I think what Rich is suggesting, adding a statement to your application that's saying it, uh, it's gonna be rebuilt as is, including in terms of profile and height. Cause we, it's clear that it's gonna be the same footprint, but we, what we don't know is the other, we don't have anything documented with the other dimensions.
What's the height requirement? Or is there a height requirement? Uh, cause right now I'm saying it's maybe.
There is a maximum.
Twenty-five feet there.
Twenty-five feet in this area.
Twenty-five.
So, can I exceed that?
Right.
Yeah, or if the current structure was thirty feet, it could go to thirty, but it can't, if the current structure's twenty-four, it can go to twenty-five. But if it's twenty-six, it can go to twenty-six, but it can't go over that.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, a sta- a statement just simply saying.
You wanted to write it on his application?
He could do it right on the, right on the original and that'd be fine.
Yeah, just initial it and date it.
Write it right on that one.
Okay, so, so we need to write, uh.
The, the, somewhere that, that, you know, the heights, what the heights would be and the pro- square footage profile or elevation will all be, will maintain the same as existing. Or if you increase the height, say that the height will be what it is now.
Well, no, but I would try to get as much pitch as I can on the roof, so I will say not to exceed the.
Twenty-five.
Right.
The house is, is that fairly flat roof, you think, you know? That's shallow pitch?
Yeah, it's a shallow.
Yeah, I, I would say, cause it's thirty feet, I would say it's definitely a four twelve there.
Yeah.
Okay, I know the new building not to exceed twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
And what else?
Anything else about the dimensions that you would like to see?
No.
Me? No, it was just that one thing, I was saying what Rich did.
Did you, Leo, did you initially date that?
Please sign it.
Please just put your date, just like if you had to modify to check this. Thanks. No, it's next. Could you be any questions?
No, I, I know the house personally, so.
Yeah.
It needs to be done.
Yeah. There's a little bit stuff been done there, but I can see why, for sure. Anything else?
Not information.
We talked a little more about the, the, the control of the water coming off each of the roofs.
Right.
And the.
That's something I pour niggas here.
Yeah, you can, sure.
Yep, and, and when, we'll, I'd soon care, uh, deal with this through a condition and, and when they get the per, when you get the permit, you'll get some written material describing that.
Yeah. I would hope also some conditions.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I would make a motion to approve the application with the condition that, uh, stormwater on both the reconstructed house and the, the new roof on the garage, um, be handled in accordance with DEP best management practices.
I'll second that.
You don't have this time for a while.
No, no, actually, probably next fall.
Yeah.
I went to the garage, you know, soon spring comes and then enjoy it till summer and then. At the end of the summer.
Yep. Are you planning to move there?
Uh, possibly.
Maybe.
You'll lose your good advertising out.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean as a trick question.
I know, it's, it's a hard one to give up, it is. But most of the stuff's online, but it's, it's just, uh, yeah, it's, it's a prime spot.
Yeah.
Well, there's quite a prime spot right the end of the.
Yeah, everybody sells stuff.
Right, yeah. They probably won't make it if I had three or four boats there. I try to keep things very small, but, yes.
Yeah. So, do you have any other questions for us?
I don't.
About the process, what we're asking for, you know.
You want the, um. To run off?
No, we haven't yet.
Going to those, like, um, maybe the DEP, um, best management practices, one of which that we mentioned here is that infiltration. Part, um, that has been very, uh, it doesn't, it's not a cure all for every condition, but it's been popular, I can say that. It, it is effective, so.
And some people have decided to go with so-called rain gardens that they get help with from the BRCA with, in terms of their design and, and even sometimes they.
Yeah, well, I'll definitely, uh, get as much education as I can beforehand and then go over things with you before we start.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
So, no more questions from you folks? Any other discussion from the board, bunnies? All those in favor? So, it is pretty bad approved, it would be mailed to you?
Thanks Gary. Oh, yes.
Take care of foot. Do you have an operation?
Yes, I, um, well, I fell off my birthday about six years ago and I had my foot pierced, uh, we did it Tuesday morning. It's a good time to hear to do it.
Yeah.
I had to give something out and I couldn't give out on season.
Parties.
Yep, I hear you.
Take care.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We get blue panel?
I was going. Do you let me use a black?
I don't think anyone cares about that. Okay, so the official other business was to hear that one. Now, it's, um, for public hearing, to answer any questions regarding changes to the, uh, commercial development review ordinance as it has been presented, so.
Okay, I have, I have questions. Uh.
Sure.
The revisions to the, uh, commercial development review ordinance, they fall in line with the comprehensive plan that we redeveloped in the last year? Is that correct?
That was our intent in that, to answer your question very completely, a number of recommendations came out of subcommittees. They were categorized and, um, this spreadsheet talks about what they were. The commercial development review could tackle a subset of those. And so not, so it's not every single recommendation that, that we can handle in one ordinance, but it is, like, more than a dozen.
All right, well, uh, reading through those documents, uh, it seemed that, uh, the, there was a lot more emphasis in the final document, uh, or the revisions, uh, based on maintaining rural character as opposed to the way that the development plan, uh, committee started up. In, in looking at the possibility of, uh, uh, growth, uh, commercial growth and whatnot. It basically pivoted away from that based on, uh, a survey of a couple hundred people, uh, that basically said they wanted to maintain rural character for the community. And, uh, the last time I was here, someone, uh, on the board mentioned something about wanting to avoid sprawl. Uh, I didn't see that particular word in any of the documents, but, uh, sprawl, I would understand sprawl. If anybody's been up to Farmington, you can see the Wilton Road, that's, I would call that sprawl. Uh, you know, Route two from Farmington all the way to Wilton is one business after another. And I've dealt with, you know, the Farmington building codes and whatnot, and, uh, kind of loose in the way that they administer. And so I can understand how it developed. Uh, so my question is, rather than, uh, and my comment the last time was that the, the ordinance, the sign ordinance is written into this draft document. Basically, um, it's been my experience in thirty-five years of selling signs and actually implementing sign notices with communities, that if you make it too difficult, you're gonna get no participation or very little, and, uh, it might not be the ones that you want. And that, the, the way that this document has evolved, that one piece of it basically says no growth. And the way that you, I interpret thirty-two square feet is slow traffic. And, uh, if you look at slow traffic, twenty-five miles an hour, the village, even including the depot and other village, uh, there, uh, thirty-two square feet works because you're driving slowly. Uh, so it doesn't affect that, but mostly Route twenty-seven is a commercial district. And thirty-two square feet's inadequate. The sign you have up front here is two pieces, thirty-two square feet each. Very little time to get the information, very minimal, uh, unless you have an application for, uh, an outlet store like was looking to go next door. That all they have to do is put their name and they put out tons of advertising, uh, then that's one thing. But what will not happen is, uh, you're not gonna get a pharmacy, you're not gonna get a grocery store. How Belgrade has four thousand residents year round, they have many more than that in the summer. And as a taxpayer, it boggles my mind as to why we wanna send people to Augusta, Waterville or Farm, uh, or, uh, Farmington even, and Winthrop to go do their grocery shopping, to go to the pharmacy, you know, people live here year round. And it doesn't have to be sprawl. The document that you have doesn't go far enough in the way of control. And it's lack of control, the thirty-two square feet in the commercial district allowing illuminated signs, that, that's gonna change Belgrade Lakes Village and you don't have anything you can say about it. As long as the thirty-two square foot is matched or not exceeded, uh, you're gonna have lighted signs down there, you know. You know, people, people are gonna come in, you know, quite honestly, I don't like the Sunset Road sign. But you could have one after another like that, you could have, uh, gas station signs, you could have, you know. Once you get one, you'll get another one and you have a compact area that is commercial. So, my question is, is why, why was not, why was the ordinance not developed in such a way to control growth? I understand avoiding sprawl, but what's happened with this ordinance, you're gonna avoid another convenience store, you're gonna avoid another, uh, the first grocery store. You know, the ones that came by two or three years ago, didn't, uh, you know, finish submitting their plans, and we've been a great little business. But if you're gonna have thirty-five thousand square foot store, you want more than thirty-two square foot sign.
My, my question, I would say that the local people don't wanna go to Augusta or Waterville or whatever. Why wasn't one a thirty square, two square foot sign on each side, alert the people who live here? Believe me, if there's a Hannaford in, in Belgrade, the people in Belgrade and Rome are gonna know there's a Hannaford in Belgrade. They're not gonna go buy it and miss it because it's.
If you go to China, if you go to China, uh, Hannaford does a store in China, they have a bigger sign than thirty-two square feet. Thirty-two square feet on each side of the building fails because it's the total of two sides total thirty-two square feet. So, that means sixteen square feet on each side. That's nothing. You know, it just doesn't work, uh, the numbers.
That's incorrect. It's, it's thirty-two square.
On each side.
On each side.
Yeah.
You're reading that incorrectly.
No.
But that aside, one important distinction, just so, you know, we don't get all boggled up with apples and oranges here, is that this is, this ordinance is not a zoning ordinance.
No.
It does not distinguish where somebody can open a business in town. It, um.
Well, that's my point.
And the commercial, the, 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 um, uh, comprehensive plan lays out recommendations along those lines. But this, this ordinance is not an ordinance, uh, that attempts to, uh, implement that aspect of the comprehensive plan.
Well, right, but that's my point. It should be, I, by trying to, and I don't know, uh, a tweak here and there, it, it basically is gonna make the whole thing fail from a commercial development standpoint. You're not gonna get any, is what I'm saying. And what you are gonna get based on the lack of limitations in the village district is gonna change the character of that village, which is definitely stated as one of the key points, uh, you know, because it has historic significance and this, that. You don't have any way of controlling it because you haven't written it in, you haven't gone far enough to do it correctly. So, again, that's in a form of statement. So, my, my real question is, is how does this get voted on? It says referendum, does that mean it gets voted on on Friday and not a town meeting?
That's our understanding. I, I mean, Gary might be able to answer that better, but that's my understanding. It's the House of Select Board wishes to handle it.
The ordinance is, my experience, my understanding, the ordinance is required, secret ballot.
That would be a fine.
That's my understanding. So, based on ten years of being a resident here, ninety percent of the population isn't allowed to have a roof. So, it's, it's a, in my, my opinion, it's a bad approach at this ordinance to try to control things because it kinda throws the baby out in the bath. It, it may be time to consider zoning. It may be time, you know, I would, you know, from sprawl standpoint or lack of sprawl, I look at Winthrop as you have two pockets of retail area and the rest of it is lakes and residential and whatnot, you know? That's not offensive. I mean, Farmington's offensive, you know? So, it, it, you only really control that with the zoning ordinance. This is not gonna control anything. And the sign ordinance is gonna screw up the, the village. You're not gonna be able to control that either. It's gonna take at least a year to change it back.
If I may, Pierre, um, the, um, uh, just again, in the way of background or how we got to this point, um, the, uh, the process we went through was, uh, we looked at all the recommendations in the, uh, comprehensive plan that, um, applied to this board, uh, to, and to existing ordinances, um, and potential new ones. And we came to the conclusion that, uh, and, and so we, you know, we identified those that required amendments to this existing ordinance, which is what we're talking about today, uh, the shoreline zoning ordinance, to the subdivision ordinance and other ordinances. And, and those clearly were within the purview of the planning board because we administer those ordinances and implement them. Zoning, of course, would be an entirely new.
And shoreline zoning is statewide.
Yeah, but, yeah, right, exactly. So, um, the, um, um, but we had decided that undertaking, uh, a land use ordinance as it's termed in the comprehensive plan or a zoning ordinance, which is, you know, really what it is, would be well beyond the scope of what we could handle, cause we're really primarily, as you saw earlier, a permitting board. That's what we do. That's our bread and butter. We're not really a planning board. And, um, and, uh, that, at the level of effort that would take would be comparable to development of the comprehensive plan itself. You're talking a multi-year effort, probably would require a, a de facto committee, much like was set up for the, uh, for the comprehensive plan itself. It would require the hiring of a consultant, much as, as was done with the, and, you know, for us to do it, we wouldn't be able to do it justice, at least that's my personal opinion. And that, that's the conclusion we arrived at. Um, and so, you know, we didn't, consequently, we didn't try to expand this into zoning. First off, I don't think it would fly in Belgrade in a million years, but, um, the, um, but our effort was focused at making this ordinance, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan, cause that, the current ordinance is clearly not.
Under home rule, do you have the authority to apply zoning type standards within the commercial district? Can you put performance standards that, that would roll over into a full zoning ordinance? In other words, you have created districts, it's on the map, that there are commercial districts. Can you develop, uh, ordinance performance standards strictly for those commercial districts? Basically, it's Route twenty-seven and the two villages, uh, because really. Because really, in looking at the surveys, you know, the rural character of the town is not necessarily represented by Route twenty-seven, unless you get down into the village. By the time you get down to, well, the fire station, basically, you start going in, that has, you know, sort of some historic characteristic there, but I, I think at that point, you have to start thinking in terms of zoning, even if you don't call it zoning, to, to protect areas, there was a lot of discussion in the, in the comprehensive plan about protecting historic characters, historic buildings, and so on and so forth. And this sign ordinance is gonna destroy what is historic about this town, you know. I mean, recently, last summer, there was a, in the newsletter for the historical site, they're talking about L.L. Bean having a place down there, his brother, I guess where the village inn is, that was his place, and, and so forth, you know, so there's history there. But, you know, if you, maybe you put a lighted sign on there, and even, even in day stores, they got a lighted signs kinda quaint, you know, the gas pumps and all that, but, you know, that, that harkens back to the fifties, I suppose. But, somebody's gonna come along, and you don't have any control, not the way you want it. So that, that's what I'm saying about not going far enough. This commercial district needs to be looked at. If you wanna destroy sprawl, or prevent sprawl, this is done, but it's also not gonna do other things. And the fact is, because it's being voted on Friday now, it's probably gonna pass, depending on who turns out, and nobody's gonna know why. Probably those same three hundred people that, you know, put on their survey that they didn't want any growth. You know, you can, my, like I said, my view of planned growth would be like Winthrop, you know, a couple little pockets, the rest of it is residential, lake and all, very similar to, to Belgrade in that regard, and you can find places around that are like that, that aren't sprawl, but you can't control, I lived in Augusta when there was no zone. No control over sprawl, anything went.
We got Western Avenue.
Oh, yeah, Western Avenue, yeah. Western Avenue was beautiful, you know.
Does Winthrop have zoning?
I think so. I mean, I, you know, the time that I went in there to apply for sign permits, they allow up to a hundred square feet for signs, but they do have districts. So, you know, you couldn't have that same size someplace, everywhere. Like, probably downtown is tighter, but usually I was on two oh two.
Danny, did you hear what we said?
Well, just a few things I wanted to comment on. One thing that Paul said, under the thirty-two square foot, and I think, George, you mentioned that it's thirty-two square foot per side. Well, under D, which is in that section, on sign area placement, says no more than two sides, which in combination are not more than thirty-two square feet.
Combined though.
But the side, the.
But if double sided, it's considered one side, isn't it?
Sign, sign area specifically, the definition of sign area specifically says, for two-sided signs, only one side of the sign should be counted towards sign area.
That's fine. What I'm saying is, you can have two sides, right? No more than thirty-two square feet.
Right.
That's what it says.
So you can have one sixteen and one sixteen.
That's what he.
On both sides.
What he's saying is, that's not sufficient.
A double-faced sign, you'll count one side, but a single-faced sign, obviously, that's all you count. So you could have, like in the village, you could have a sixteen-square-foot sign, let's say that, you know, the village inn, perfect place, sixteen-square-foot sign on the building, sixteen-square-foot sign freestanding. Perfectly appropriate, right size. Thirty-two square foot, eh, might be tight, double face. But, you know, so, looking at the village, the thirty-two square feet can work, you know, but out here, you know, forty-five, fifty-five miles an hour, it's, it's just not enough. And like I said, any business, I mean, you just have to take a look at Christie's. Well, if somebody else wanted to come in, like Big Apple, they wanna put a gas sign, okay, that's usually six by six, six by six, they're already over. Wanna put a gas price sign. Well, gas price signs technically fall under a different section than a McConnell sign in the state law, so you don't have to argue that one. But, but you, you get into a point where, based on the speed of traffic, you would basically discourage a business from spending a million to two million dollars to develop a facility. And that's where I get back into the tax point, because you're gonna deny a million-dollar property, or two million-dollar property from being developed, just because of a, a sign ordinance that wasn't thought out well enough?
I, I guess I would. You know, the others weren't here when you came to our regular meeting last time, but, or the time before, but Rich made an excellent point. This was a non-issue for Dollar General. This is not an issue for them. They, they're there, they wanna be there because their marketing studies say that that's a good place to do business. Not because, and the fact that the sign is thirty-two square feet or sixteen square feet doesn't matter iota to them.
Being between the town office and the post office.
Yeah, no, it's about traffic volume, not signs.
You have pedestrians, basically. I mean, that, that will get, you know, this, this triangle of, you know, Route eleven and one thirty-five and whatnot, this is different.
I mean, in two thousand and sixteen, you know, signs are not how people advertise anymore. It's antiquated. You know, it's just, just for a location.
No, I, I.
No, no, no.
I disagree with that. Having, and the reason why I say that is, I went through three years of virtual hell trying to get some sense made out of signs in the state of Maine, and we put together a, a whole bunch of issues surrounding signs, and I was caught being called anti-environmentalist and all of that, all of that, by people from all over this area, and all over the state, all of them went through this misery. And all we were trying to do is make some sense out of a really poor set of sign laws in state law. But, that's that issue. On a, on an issue of, I'm getting back, I'm putting you guys in, if I had some issues, right? Historical area, when I was town manager, constantly confronted this issue of signs, right? We don't want this, especially in the last couple, couple of years when Steve's appliances put a sign down there. We don't want those signs. We, we gotta do something about that. Talked to town select board at the time, it was the last year I was town manager, and said, perhaps we can draw up a sign ordinance, purely a local sign ordinance, that kind of allows for commercial businesses to do their thing, because I don't wanna stop the town anymore. I'm not an anti-development person, but also protect, protects areas within our town, like the village, from having these kind of gaudy signs. In fact, I think I was quoted in paper, is we have to decide what we wanna be when we grow up. Do we wanna be in Old Orchard Beach on the lake? Right? So, I think part of, well, I, I, and I wasn't here for what Paul said, but I think part of what we might be able to do in solving problems, if we could come up with any sign ordinance, apart, something that would be, doesn't have to be part of this work, it may be, but something that makes sense for Belgrade. And I was willing to work with Paul on that at the time, as long as we're getting to entertain that. I talked to business community, several people in the business community, Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Group, I offered to develop a sign for that, it was, because it's a regional business group, they didn't, you know, they didn't really want it. But there are people in town that I know that would be very upset if the village started setting up lighted signs like you see. I don't think, that's not a problem for people, but seeing that go for the village or in the village.
Well, it was when they, it was flashing and changed every couple of seconds, because DOT got inundated with complaints.
That's right, because that's DOT's law, and so is Christie's. Both of those signs are violation of DOT's sign law. But, a sign ordinance, a local sign, it's, it's all that, right?
Well, you know, to respond to your basic point, Danny, which is a good one, you know, what does Belgrade wanna be when it grows up, or, or at least for the next ten years? The comprehensive plan answers that question. And what the comprehensive plan says is, it doesn't want Belgrade to be Route Two in Wilton. Now, this ordinance is not a zoning ordinance, so it doesn't deal with sprawl, in the sense of, you know, mini malls all up and down Route twenty-seven, but it definitely doesn't want Route twenty-seven to look like hell either.
No, I.
And, and, and part of hell is having it look like New Jersey with bright signs all along, big, large, bright signs flashing.
Already got it. I mean.
We got it because we haven't got a sign ordinance that deals with.
There you go.
So, so if I may, Paul, last time you were here, I, I recommended that you go to the select persons and voice your concerns about having a sign ordinance.
Well, you said that it was coming back here.
So, if, if, if I may, if I may, that would be the direction to go, because if we, as a planning board, we can have direction from the select persons to do anything like that, or for the, the development of an ordinance. So, I'm, I'm holding true to that. So whether it's you, or Denny, or anybody else that would go to the select persons to say, is it in the town's best interest to develop a sign ordinance, I think, if, if that's the direction we wanna go as a town, as a mature town as we grow up, right, then that's the direction we take. And, and I have to keep this all in perspective too, relative to the timeline of this revised ordinance getting to this public hearing. We have another one in January, and then we have to be ready to go, our goal is to go to the March meeting. The time, we, we are at the eleventh hour, it's like eleven fifty-nine right now. You can understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We have like zero time to do anything else about this right now.
Will the select board have the authority to remove this from the draft? It's still on the draft.
Can we question? No, I think, the select board, where it doesn't have to put it on the board, that they don't want it on the board.
Yeah, they could.
So they could just say no.
Kill it.
They could kill it. I know, you guys did a lot of work, I appreciate all the work you guys do all the time, I'm glad I'm not sitting on that floor, right? It's a tough work, you know, I was on the appeals board, I know. So, so that's, that can be stopped, but, but it's, it's, for me, I think maybe you're suggesting probably the better one, and that is to go to the select board, look at, developing a sign ordinance that meets at least my concerns, or our concerns, or collective concerns as a community, and maybe we can do something along those lines. Certainly, we don't have a zoning ordinance, and maybe that's what we should be actually working on at some point, right? I, I, I do have another point I wanna make on the, the, the proposed ordinance. In here, you talked about meetings replacing public hearings, am I not mistaken?
That's correct.
Is this for commercial development?
Yeah. So, let me ask you the difference between a meeting and a public hearing.
So, so you wanted to know like.
Yeah, I wanted to.
Oh, that was the question.
That's the question.
Basically, we were advised by KV cog that there's essentially none.
Right.
And, and why hold a hearing on a different day, a hearing on a different day than your regularly scheduled meetings that are publicly advertised, and with the likelihood that nobody's gonna show up?
Well, well, that may be, my understanding of a public hearing is that there are specific legal notice requirements, right? As opposed to a meeting.
Well, and if, Danny, did you see that we've expanded the notice requirements?
Right.
They're far more effective than anything we have now.
It says a minimum of seven days.
Well, and also, a butters are, currently, a butters are not notified, and we've expanded it, much like Augusta, to five hundred feet.
Right, I, I saw that, and I think that that's appropriate. I just don't know if seven business days by first-class mail is appropriate. It, it depends, some people that might not be here, it might be away for a week or two weeks. Now, I know you can't cover all aspects of it, but.
On one hand, you're, you're trying to provide, put comment to the butters and everything, and at the same time, you make it too long, you're, the people you criticize for holding up to the guy who wants to build his development, because he wants fifteen days of it.
Doesn't Augusta also put out a law on that?
Yeah.
That notifies people as soon as the application's submitted or one of them's scheduled.
Yeah, we actually discussed that, whether the town wanted to get into the business of owning signs and.
Well, I just think, I just think there are some situations where someone in seven days might not be around in time to get the notice, and might not be able to react. It's just a, it's a, and I know, notice issues are always a problem, not a problem for DEP.
And of course, the flip side of that too, as you probably well know, is you give people too much notice and they forget about it.
That's exactly right.
Well, this meeting had two entries in the Kennebec Journal, is that normal? I mean, usually it's once a week, legal notices, but there were two this week about this meeting. And that raises another question, because on my road, I see Kennebec, I get the Kennebec Journal, because I lived in Augusta, but some people gravitate towards Wandville, and I'm not sure they necessarily put the same notices in.
I'm not sure of that either, but.
To be honest with you, we operated on the basis that nobody reads legal notices.
Yeah, I know. You're right. But it's a legal requirement.
Yes.
It's an antiquated legal requirement.
Right.
I talked to three, four businesses, four people, especially the businesses, when I got, understood that this was up. I think Paul noticed me, I, I don't follow this stuff, sorry, and I'm really not gonna be impacted by it from a business point of view. But none of them had heard about the fact that this notice was going forward, and that's within the village.
The, we've reached out to the, to the Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Group, myself and another member met with them.
Well, that may be, I'm just telling you, it's naked.
And, and they got notices, an invite to the public informational meeting, which is the point in time where we could get comments and respond to them and make changes still, and then nobody showed up.
How about the Friends of Belgrade Lakes? That's not a business group, it is not a business group.
Yeah, but it.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting group.
Yeah, I mean, I, as you know, there's quite a bit of overlap there in terms of the business membership.
There is.
You could, you guys know, there's only so much you can do, you can't get the horse to the water trough, if they don't wanna drink.
The surprise gets perturbed. You know, you said that most of your recommendations, you went to KV cog and.
Yes.
Yeah, they were our consultant.
You know, I, I hate to say it, but the government does know, well, they know about this much about business, right? And so, they, they know about control, and so usually, you get somebody that doesn't know anything, and they say, oh, this works. You know, I, I'd have to rewrite ordinances in towns, you know, like I think I mentioned the last time, Far Harbor was the first municipality in the country to implement a dark-skY portrait, banning internally lighted signs. Well, they changed it because of a museum, and they didn't know how to do it. I wrote the change. But, if I'd been there ten years earlier, they would've listened to it, you know, listening to whoever they were listening to. But it had a negative impact, and the only time that they listened, they weren't listening to businesses, they were listening to a museum, which was an attraction for the community. So you have to look at every sign, and oftentimes, nobody has the information. I mean, I, I lived here, ten years ago, you were the planning board. I, I went to the planning boards, tried to draft an ordinance, and it was too much for anybody to take on at the time.
Right, and, but what you brought forward was excellent, and it was such food for thought, and we had discussions, we talked about some of the signs that were around at the time, one of the, which was across the street, and we had just excellent discussions about it, and I still have some of the same information you gave me then, about driving speeds, changing rates, you know, all that stuff. So, it's great information, and, and I still think, I'm gonna get back to this, going to the select board to find out if a sign ordinance is due, it might be the path for our town going forward. 'Cause, 'cause the good news is this, no matter what we do with this ordinance or any other one, they can all be revised again. So should it be that in, in two thousand seventeen, and everybody says, by God, we need a signed ordinance? Great, let's get one going. But, we're, we're at a point where we've, we've worked for more than a year to get something revised, to bring to the town to vote.
I mean, you made a really good point last time that you were here, that there becomes sort of a bifurcated system. This ordinance only applies to new commercial or non-residential development, so you have one set of standards for them, for new businesses, say, but there's nothing for existing businesses, and that's where a sign ordinance could cover that loophole. So, you know, Christie's could put up a sign, just, you know, a gazillion feet in size if they wanted to, and, and that would be fine, because this ordinance doesn't apply to Christie's unless they decide to do a major expansion.
But I think that's one of the problems. I think that new businesses are gonna look long and hard. Now, I, I disagree with you that signs are passe, that nobody's, really reads them anymore. I read lots of signs. I go down the road looking for a gas station, I look for a sign, and I think people still read signs, and I think.
And I think people still read signs, and I think they're they're drawn into business by signs. So you're talking about new businesses that will have no real capability of putting up a sign that will attract customers. That kind of that kind of bothers me a little bit.
Well, in fact, that argument uh about everyone having GPS and all of that, that came up repeatedly six years ago, five years ago. People don't need signs anymore.
Well, let me tell you where I heard that, Gary, from the Main Development Foundation.
Yeah, I'm sure you don't care, I still use signs.
Uh that by and large, their marketing studies show that people don't do not use signs to make decisions about what they're gonna buy, where they're gonna buy it. They make those decisions based on all the other advertising they've received by other media, and then they just need to locate the business.
Well, that may be true when you're targeting a product or service. When you drive through Belgrade, let me give you for an example. You may have been on vacation on the coast, and you're down in Rockland, and you wanna go to Sugarloaf. Well, now you're gonna drive right through Belgrade, you would have anyways. But with the new bridge in Augusta, you're likely to drive through that way. And uh you're gonna drive through Belgrade, and I suppose you'll be punching in ice cream, you know. Uh but the idea is is that regardless of whether people do that, impulse purchases. I tried to get an ordinance passed that would have benefited the the rest area for this, the turnpike in West Gardner. Cuz they were losing money, they were losing a million dollars a year in the place. And uh because they got no, they had nineteen signs, the D O T and the turnpike authority put up, and it wasn't good enough because you couldn't see it.
The dumb thing was that they built it a half a mile from the turnpike.
Right, right, that's right.
Somebody forgot about location, location, location.
Well, that's right, so if you have the location, all you need is a nudge to turn the wheel. And it's it's an impulse to do that, just say, oh, by the way, you know, driving down, if you drive out of state, right, and and they uh operate differently. But if you drive through Massachusetts and Connecticut, how often do you drive down the road and say, oh, does the rest area come up, does anybody need to stop? I'll probably stop for some gas if that happens. That's the conversation that happens, and and then pretty soon you end up staying there and you have a meal. So the impulse to stop only happens after you get clued into the fact that it's an easy stopping. So missing that point for Belgrade uh would again eliminate an opportunity for another business. But the idea of controlling business growth, I understand, and sprawl, I understand, everybody should take a ride out the route to, no, no question. You don't want that here.
Or Route three oh two in Wyndham, wherever.
Well, it's coming here, I think at some point in time, we're gonna have to really seriously look at how we can. Coming right up Route twenty-seven.
Agreed.
You know, I mean, what what I said about signs really is irrelevant to this discussion, what is relevant is what the comprehensive plan says. And and there's discussion in there, and this all came from the business community here in town, about Route twenty-seven serves serving as a corridor to not only Belgrade Lakes Village, but the region in general. And what people see in this corridor uh helps them make up their mind about the region and how desirable it is as a as a tourism destination, and as a place to even live. And so one of the one of the things we tried to do, again, we can't control under this ordinance where people place businesses or other non-residential uses. But it's just a matter of can you mitigate the impacts on the passersby as well as neighbors and the community at large, including the town, in terms of whatever costs it might impose on the town for services. And um the uh and so, you know, hence the emphasis on vegetative screening, hence the emphasis on smaller signs. You know, we're we wanted to be more like Freeport than we did in Augusta.
If I could just, we could go all night, and I think the suggestion that we go to the select board, we have a select person here. He understands these are couple of our concerns. It's I you have a difficult position, but perhaps we can go to the select board and look at a sign ordinance, which can be adopted uh and put on top of this and and actually uh become the effect of this ordinance versus the the passages you have in your uh in this on signs. So probably we should look at doing that, and so I appreciate that.
I I would just, Denny, I would just encourage you though to include a lot of the businesses down in the village, because they're gonna have a very different view than you do.
Well, well, some that I've talked to don't, but having said that, I've heard, I I've talked to them and said I wouldn't go forward unless they wanted a uh they wanted a sign where this that they would have all of their input. I mean, that's the whole thing, is we've gotta meld not just the future potential for businesses coming up the highway with big signs. We've gotta meld that into existing signs.
Right.
I mean, existing existing businesses and their desires for signs. And I can tell you right now, there are businesses down there that don't want those flashing signs.
Oh, I tell me about it, I heard all about it, cuz I was on the Economic Development Subcommittee for the Comprehensive Plan, and I was the only non-business person there. And you know, when we talked about signs, I I got a earful, you know, just hearing about it in terms of, and this is where the whole concept of viewing this as a gateway to the to Belgrade Lakes Village and and the regional tourism economy kinda came from.
I think a sign ordinance could solve the problems of visual impacts of signs. Or in the need for, you know, legitimate uh information, informative signs.
And and the other thing we heard at the public informational meeting, which they're not, those folks aren't here, but was the concern for a black sky.
Right.
That Belgrade not become a place where, you know, you could see from, you know, thirty-five miles away in terms of the glow, you know, from the glare.
We're already losing that, because I used to come, when I first moved here, I used to be able to go out with a telescope, no problem.
Yeah.
I got fifty houses up the road, I got, I don't know how much it's.
Yeah, no, well, and and the impact from Augusta even.
You can see Augusta from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
But but anyway, that, you know, that's kinda in public input we got at the public informational meeting.
All those issues can only be incorporated into a comprehensive sign ordinance, not something like this, because like I said, you've shot yourself in the foot with the village. You have no control over it, you're gonna have to catch up a year, and somebody's not gonna say, oh, I really like it the way it is. No, somebody's gonna wanna get a foothold and say, well, I can beat my competition. You know, a couple of businesses have gone in and out in a year or two. Well, maybe somebody's gonna say, well, if I had a lighted sign, it would probably be okay, or at least a window neon, or at least this, at least of that. You're not taking those things into consideration, and it's gonna happen. Uh the negative part about Steve's is the fact that he changed the ordinance in that town to allow that sign to change every two seconds, which is permissible under state law. But the two seconds really only deals with a time and temperature sign, like there's a time and temperature sign here, that's a changeable sign. So uh under that guideline, uh the way that this is written, none of the changeable signs can change.
Once every twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, including the town's, including the town's sign.
Right, and town sign currently is in violation of state law.
Speaking of the town sign, I don't know, I can't see it unless I'm within a hundred fifty feet from the.
Trees.
Yep, there's no useful purchase.
We didn't.
And it's red.
We didn't.
And black.
Guess what, Denny, we didn't, we didn't design that, we only approved what was proposed.
I don't, I don't know who put, did you decide?
I did, it could have been white, they had the option, they didn't wanna spend the money.
They didn't have the money.
So.
You know, I I think that, you know, Paul, you wanna get together and talk about a sign ordinance again?
Well, you know, my only vested interest is that I pay taxes, and if there's no commercial development, my taxes as a lakefront residential property owner, you know, I'm I got a twenty percent increase the last time we had a reevaluation, and I didn't like it.
I didn't like it.
Yeah, you're not on the lake, but but the point is, though, is that some commercial development can serve the four thousand people that live here, you know, and that would be desirable. For doctors that are gonna work at this new hospital, they wanna live on the lake. But, you know, driving in and going to, well, they're not gonna go to Walmart necessarily, they go to Shaw's or Haniford or whatever, it's an inconvenience, you know, they like to make things convenient. Uh you know, uh the older people who live in this town, which in some cases, there's probably a fairly good percentage.
So it's still a still.
Pharmacy would be great then.
Yeah, right, and and we heard that during the comprehensive plan, along with a laundromat for some reason.
But this area out here, the central part of town, you know, already has commercial development. You could actually just draw a little circle and say, okay, we're gonna treat this this way, and uh you know, because.
And treat Belgrade Lakes differently.
Another way, and and you really have to fine tune this thing, and the sign ordinance would do the same thing, because right now, the sign ordinance will, you know, you're shitting yourselves in the foot.
I mean, the commercial, the um comprehensive plan doesn't make a distinction between one village area and another village area, it treats North Belgrade the same way. And part of this was pressure from the state to, and we had to, we had to come up with more uh areas for commercial development than was originally proposed in the comprehensive plan, it didn't meet state guidelines. And so that's why the village, Belgrade Lakes Village, uh which isn't the only village in town.
Right.
Um uh was expanded to include the West Road and around the Castle Island Road, uh around the golf course basically, cuz basically that's commercial development. Um and and um and I think we did some expansion in North Belgrade as well.
We did, cuz we we debated how far along we need to go.
Yeah, and and as you said, you know, it reflects the fact that this what people, some people in town call the triangle, this, you know, is kinda the center.
Every one of those areas, the village, the West Road, the Castle Island Road, whatever it is, the depot, Route twenty-seven out here, I think you've identified the north of one thirty-five or south of one thirty-five uh for electronic signs. Um I mean, you just have to do more, and uh I think if you if you write a correct sign ordinance, if zoning is nothing that anybody wants to consider for ten years. Well, the the sign ordinance uh can at least be rolled into that, you could do that part of it right away.
I think that's what they're suggesting, Paul.
And so that would be my only thing, cuz this ordinance has the potential of doing damage. Uh so I'm gonna do damage, like I said, in the, what I say, twenty-seven, forty-seven corridor, you could kill growth, number one, but down in the village. I tell you, not everybody's on board necessarily, they're they're more on board with making money than they are being loyal to the village, and you're gonna end up with things you don't want, and you can't stop it.
Well, I'll go on record and say that that's what you said is is true in any situation. Whether it's this ordinance or any other one, right? Because those that wanna make money wanna make money without without their primary concern being an ordinance. So we, as a board, has worked for more than a year to develop something to go to the voters, and we thought would hit the sweet spot. Have worked very hard at doing so, and this is what we're gonna be able to present, hopefully, with enough endorsement that we can get it to pass. I don't agree with everything you had that you said tonight about how it's gonna shoot ourselves in the foot, but that's just me. Um every time you make a decision, there's gonna be good and bad about any part of it. So um I'm I'm very thankful for what you've been able to bring forward, and I really think we need to direct energies that are appropriate to the select board to find out if a sign ordinance is the path forward, I believe it is.
So I've I've heard you say that twice, and I appreciate that, and I agree with you, and should the select board give their nod? Uh I think if you needed support or help, I would be willing to, would you be willing to help in that effort? Uh in developing an appropriate sign ordinance for the town, and talking to people to make sure that all of their interests are collectively included as possible? If you're willing to do that, but you know, if the board comes to you and says, develop a sign ordinance, and you say no, then.
Well, I'm not sure we have a lot of choice in the matter. I mean, we were ordered to a mass gathering ordinance, and we did that even though it wasn't on our agenda.
What kind of ordinance?
Mass gathering ordinance.
Right.
An ordinance for no good reason.
And according to.
Well, I did two bills.
They went through. It did, and well, speaking of that, I saw an email, Trey said something about we're developing a wind ordinance.
Oh, we're not, that's, I think that what it was.
Roll. Which is another one, and I'm.
Well, you should probably.
But but the guy from Rome said that, oh, I read that you guys in Belgrade.
Yeah, yeah, got it wrong.
I didn't know you were doing that, right? And I can see other ordinances that might come up.
Yeah.
You just think you're on a.
Cell phone tower.
We're gonna ban pot stores anyway.
For for your benefit, Denny, the our work plan is to, uh after we're done with this ordinance, we're moving on to shoreline zoning, cuz that's the other pressing ordinance in terms of the number of permits we issue. It under this ordinance, most of the, we've issued quite a few permits this year. None, no, two on Route on Route twenty-seven, this facility, and the place across the street, which is a good example of why the current ordinance doesn't work. And um and then everything else is scattered hither and yon through town. You know, used car dealers, um auto repair shops, you know.
Voting places.
Yeah, I mean, in residential neighborhoods.
Who who do you envision enforcing the the current ordinance?
Code enforcement.
Yeah, CEO.
I mean, there's nobody else.
There's no one enforcing sign. You you you've mentioned that D O T comes around now, that they do.
Yeah, no.
But there's a violation right down on the baseball field, which I'll never turn anyone in on, because I think that's fine, but facing those signs out toward the highways against state law.
Oh.
And 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 I actually had to, D O T came to me once and told me to have them turned in, I did. But then I saw that up on the at the uh ball field up in uh North Belgrade there, they're going into open, that new ball field there. They have all those signs out there.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
And and so I told the guy about that, and he said, I don't care, let them come after me. So I said, next time people turn those signs around, I'm not gonna say a word.
Right, right.
What I was told by D O T was that they only enforce it when they get complaints.
And did they enforce the issue down along a across the school there, the uh that sign issue down there? And they put that big sign in down across the nobody's school, central school.
Freshway.
Where?
The auto plant.
Oh, Belgrade Performance Auto?
At his at his facility?
Yeah, I thought there was a sign down there.
No, he put a.
He put a turner sign right at the corner, which is right.
Yeah, no, they did enforce that.
Yeah, I did move it. Yeah, I did that.
Okay, because there was a problem, I heard complaints.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, Gary took care of that, yeah.
Yeah, well, the D O T doesn't, they don't necessarily do their job, but like, for instance, for years, the golf course had a sign on Route twenty-seven, you know, facing over to uh it was at the community center.
Yeah.
Uh that was a violation of state law.
Yeah.
Billboard law, cuz you're supposed to only place a sign at the at the business, place of business. And the place of business has to be, the sign has to be within a thousand feet of the place of business, and it has to be on the access road.
Oh.
So it should have been on the West Road, which didn't make any sense, you know.
You had that fixed up.
But yeah, but we gotta fix by not doing anything, cuz the D O T fixed it after years of hearing.
After threats.
Yeah, well.
The threats are.
Took them, but but nonetheless, some of these laws really need to be taken a look at, because like that law being changed benefited Belgrade, because it's a recreational facility, somebody goes, oh, there's a golf course there, I mean, there's enough landscaping, unless you're really looking at it, you don't know if you're not from this area. But it's what, the number one ranked golf course in the state year after year? So you know, these are some of the things that you wanna do something about Belgrade that's positive. The signs have something to do with it, the signs uh do fill a gap, not everybody is on a computer or cell smartphone or whatever, to find their way around. And sometimes you're looking for something else, and this other thing comes up, you go, oh, wow, I didn't know this was here. And so I, you know, um the ordinance, this ordinance will do damage in the short term, you can fix it in the long term if you want, but because it's gonna be voted on on Friday, uh let's put it this way, when was the last time they didn't vote something in?
Oh, I can't remember.
Called school budgets.
No, well, not outside the school, there was a town office that wasn't built.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that.
That took a lot of effort, yeah.
Yeah, and a zoning ordinance.
And a zoning, that was a long time.
But again, this is a piece that can be part of a zoning ordinance, but it's a piece that if you're gonna wanna do something about development and control some of the things that you would like to control, you really have to have an ordinance, you know. And actually, it will take it out of your hands if it's a separate document, you could actually say that you could submit a plan and file for a permit and make money when you file for a permit, so. You don't have to come here.
So there are are benefits by going this way, and that's why, you know, you know, pointing in that direction, so so I guess I would just wanna make sure that that we talk about this just a little bit, that should there be a nod from the select board to go ahead with a development or a sign ordinance? Um, I'm thinking that that would take some time to do so, right?
Well, the first thing you could probably be to pull a dozen of those ordinance, since I know.
You can pull them together.
I know which ones are probably in the right direction.
Yeah, so, so, okay, and that would be fantastic. And, you know, to George's point about making sure to consider the opinions of the people in the, the, uh, what's it called? The Belgrade, what's that?
Business group.
Business.
Belgrade Lakes Region Business Group.
Yeah, because they have voiced very different concerns.
Well, that ordinance wouldn't go to the voters till next March, correct?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, maybe, whether we get it, gonna be first opportunity.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking.
Might have more special meanings than it would be thrown in.
But it could be thrown into the November.
What I'm trying to say is, is. To send expectations, it probably would not be for this March.
No.
Oh, no.
Well, that's all right.
Okay, so, I, I think we can agree that, that there are ways to make this better, you know, for the town going forward. You know, and we have experts, like you, Paul, and you, Denny, who have had.
She's the expert, I just, I can get together with people, that's all.
Yes, which is fantastic, and, and anything that can make this better is good. So, please, go forth and do that, that would be wonderful. Much appreciated.
Change your sign on the twenty. You need to call the, to get a thing repaired. It's a section that's out facing north, uh, towards Christie's.
That's a sign I can't read.
Denny, just so you know that, you know, so I'm perfectly transparent.
Three panels on the bottom.
To get my vote on this board for any, you know, sign ordinance, I'm gonna be measuring that right against that comprehensive plan.
It's like, it's like.
Yeah, because.
Because, like I said, you know, we do, we do not wanna be Western Avenue, we wanna be Freeport.
That's the whole point, I don't wanna be Western Avenue.
Right.
And I've raised that point in two thousand seven, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. I don't wanna be Western Avenue. I do want business development, I think there's an appropriate way using the sign ordinance perhaps, uh, if we're not gonna do zoning, uh, to get what we want, achieve what we want, and still have, uh, historic areas protected.
Because one, one of the considerations, of course, because we don't have zoning, is, among other reasons, just historical land use, uh, development patterns, is that you have, we will always have, particularly in the village areas, a mix, it, it's gonna be a mixed-use zone, i- by design. It, it's residential and commercial and other institutional, town office, whatever, schools. Um, and, uh, and so you have to think, put yourself in the shoes of the person living next door to that sign. You know, you gotta walk in their shoes a little bit. You know, and what nuisance are you gonna create? So, you gotta take that into perspective.
Like the depot, for instance, you know, once you cross, uh, you know, get away from, uh, Hammond Lumber, uh, the old village that's there, that can have its own sign ordinance, you know, all the way to the corner.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, so you could treat it. You could be the same sign ordinance as down in the other village. No ex, no internal lighting, you know, it's so many square feet, this and that. Uh, and, and if you have a zoning ordinance, typically a zoning ordinance will have approved uses. So you can limit, even if you have mixed commercial and residential, you can limit.
And that's one reason why we couldn't do that here, because we couldn't parcel out, well, by lots of lots, for example, what a standard's applied where.
Right.
We could only do it in broad-brush terms.
Right.
And, and you cannot do it otherwise without zoning, which is what we were advised.
This is so key to keep in mind, that this is the backdrop for this entire thing, not only as relates to comprehensive plan and our charge to modify this ordinance, the shoreline zone ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the minimal loss size ordinance, even the floodplain ordinance.
But I think the sign ordinance can lay down over it without having a zoning ordinance. And you will achieve them as long as you want.
So, that's great, I'm just, you know.
One comment, uh, in, in the village area, there's a self-limiting, uh, growth-limiting factor that's there.
Parking.
Not just parking.
Lot size.
It's access to, uh, uh, fresh waters. Because, th- th- in fact, Pete's Pig, Pete's Pig, something like.
Barbecue, yeah.
Barbecue.
Yeah.
Uh, they couldn't expand, because they have a limited amount of water, and they can only have so many seats up there.
Right.
And so, without a sewage or a water line down in that area, you're, you're gonna be growth limiting.
Right, and pa- and parking is too, because.
Well, parking is a huge problem.
Because under this ordinance, we would not be able to find in favor of a new business down there, because, uh, they don't, there's inadequate parking.
We faced it already with, with some.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my worst fear being on this board, is that somebody comes in with a business that people really want, and we're gonna deny it because there's no parking.
Well, I, I offered a solution to the town a while back, but, but disliked it, but, but that was the nod. And that was the purchase of the twelve acres around the Belgrade Region Business Group and setting up a parking lot in there. But having said all that, you can talk about all the solutions, we've just gotta get, for, for, we can agree on some framework over, overlaying this, so that we can.
Yeah, all the solutions require a lot of money. The sign ordinance doesn't, that's, it doesn't solve those other problems like parking, you know?
Right.
You put a parking garage where the old hotels.
Street payments on that. Twenty thousand dollars in parking expenses.
Yeah.
Five thousand dollars a lane.
Right.
That's right. Don't hire this guy, so. All right, well, uh, my big question was answered by the business developers.
Right.
And is this, this is under home rule, this is, these things that.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll be hearing the other side of the story, mostly, if we're alive.
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do we have to close the hearing?
It wasn't a hearing, yeah.
It was a hearing.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was.
Can't do anything, well.
Well, that's true, it was a hearing.
Uh, so when is the, uh, so I thought.
Tuesday.
They're gonna be reviewing this?
No, 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 no.
We were told it was gonna be January seventeen.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yep.
George, am I wrong? Was it, uh, yeah, January seventeenth?
Yeah, it sounds right. You guys wanna come in and get on the, uh, attendance, no problem.
Tuesday?
Yep. Well, all right. You two attending?
Just, uh, missed a picture of the face of Adam.
Okay. You ready to join, yep?
We got one more.
Got one?
Thanks.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for coming in.
Must be zero, man.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
Gentlemen.
Thanks, thanks for coming in tonight, thanks, and, thanks. I, it was mentioned self-limiting, I have a question for the board, see if that, anybody would recall this. But, um, one of the reasons, or one of the items that we talked about extensively in the comprehensive plan was the amount of land that would be gobbled up anytime there was any kind of development. So we had total, right, that we, that we could develop, or that we stated.
Plan called for certain limit or something.
Yeah, the, the plan, and it had to do, yeah, was that, to the, the goal was to maintain sixty percent of, uh, town in open space.
Right.
For the purpose of minimizing inca- additional phosphorus loading into the lakes.
Thereby mitigating impact to the quality of water.
Right.
So, um, uh, just because Route twenty seven appears to, this is my own opinion, appears to be pretty open right now, regardless of how it might appear, there is a finite number of businesses that will end up being developed in town, whether it's on twenty seven or any other road. So, so, uh, and I say that because, um, when a person is saying that what will end up happening is, I can't, I'm gonna end up shooing a business away, because they won't be able to have another one in town, because there have been so many already, I disagree with that, I think it's a finite number that will only end up being here anyway, because of the limitations placed, that we have, as a town, have placed to maintain the sixty percent undeveloped in town.
At the same time, that sixty percent is kind of a goal. I don't think there's anything that we have to stop issuing permits when it gets to sixty percent or.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, the only way that would ever, in a regulatory sense, could get implemented is if the town ever got zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, I, I mean, the only thing that this ordinance in particular, but the subdivision ordinance, uh, I guess secondarily, uh, is, you know, min- is to, the, 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 the general goal of mi- keeping all the phosphorus on the site of development.
Right.
And all the stormwater on the site of development, or if it is gonna go off the site, you know, like with the town office, it goes someplace like the cow pond down the street where it infiltrates into the groundwater.
The other limiting factor is no water, no sewer.
Yeah, right, that.
For years, and they agreed.
And I've done McDonald's, I buy, Belgrade Center still.
Yeah, right.
No water, no sewer.
Right, right, yeah, they, they don't wanna be on a private well.
Absolutely.
Because it'll be a public well.
That's right.
And they'll be regulated by the drinking water program.
Right, right. So, so with, with what I think are both real and perhaps perceived limiting factors, um, at least currently, I, I, I don't see a mad rush to develop all kinds of property along the way that would then, um, come into some kind of a contest about whether someone could do something just because of a sign. I, I stand by that logic.
Yeah, I, I personally don't, I, I disagree with that, but, you know, you know, Freeport's similar but different, um, you know, people go to Freeport, I mean, everybody knows about Freeport, right? You know, El Albin and, and all the outlet stores, but, you know, you look at the gas stations, they got very small amount of signs in Freeport.
It doesn't, it doesn't stop them from building them.
No, doesn't. I mean, admittedly, we're not Freeport, we don't have that attraction, but still, you know, it, it, somebody's not gonna drive past a Irving station just because of the si- the size of the sign, if they need gas.
Particularly when all the other businesses have the same signage.
Yeah, right.
So, so in that light, I guess what I'm trying to say is, at this point, I don't see, um, the size of a sign in the current ordinance being the limiting factor for development of a business. I mean, I just don't see it happening.
What, what was, I mean, not, this wasn't the reason why I was at a meeting of the main development foundation, but, you know, these are the big developers in the state, you know, they said, the bigger problem is when you get saturation of signs. You get so many signs that nobody looks at any of the signs.
They can't.
Yeah, but when they blur, and so you get this competition of signs, and it, and it, and it neutralizes all the signs.
Right, and, and, and based on that, um, we've already talked about these other limiting things. So, because there's no water, there's no sewer, I, I just, and there's other things, I just don't see a mass development of, of everything right along these roads.
I mean, it's gonna be small businesses primarily.
I, I believe, I, I do believe there will be small businesses. And, um, you know, one of the things we talked about with the, uh, whether it Hanford or whatever is it, built down there.
That had nothing to do with this sign.
It didn't, it was, it, it was money to, to develop that turning lane.
Yeah.
And, and, uh.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, for this, for that speed.
Turning lane, yeah.
That was it.
Yeah.
That was the limiting factor.
That turning lane is the new Dunkin' Donuts at Damon's Quick Stop, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Wow, this is, that's, that's, that's a serious.
Yeah, that's some serious coin right there.
Did the developer have to pay that?
Jeff Damon, the owner of the store, had to pay it.
Wow. Just, are they still selling regular coffee there too? Would they get?
What's most important?
They gave up the regular coffee, they can't, they can't sell breakfast sandwiches, no?
Oh, so that was all part of that co.
Contract.
Yeah, for me.
Well, we're in there today for the first time to see how this looks. They got it, uh, Dunkin' Donuts.
I heard Dunkin' Donuts pays them seventeen thousand a month, at least, four times, that's a lot of coin.
Yeah, that is, that's serious revenue.
So, the two hundred and forty thousand dollars can be offset by that?
Well, that's just for the lane. I bought the house next door for two sixty five, they did the renovations at the store for Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
So they bought that house just so they could expand over on the side there?
Yeah.
Wow. I didn't.
Cause they came to the planning board in Augusta and their pocket didn't work, it was, it was, it was, it was totally messed up.
Yeah.
They said, we, you, you're trying to fit too much on this property. So he went and bought that house next door.
Wondered about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, back to, I, I personally, and Craig may have some thoughts in terms of signs and stuff, but, you know, in my mind, you don't have to have more than a plywood-sized sign to advertise that you're there. It's, and about, if you go on fifty miles an hour, I can read that there's a, I don't know, lawnmower, a repair or something, or car sale.
You need, you need those little blue and white highway signs to direct you how to get there, right?
Yep. They're not there, these are, nope, and they're on, they're on fifty-five, sixty-five mile an hour roads. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm still of the opinion that what we have will work for my vote to have this passed.
The last, the last second select board would, would agree with you, I don't know, I don't know this one. No?
Yeah, I know, we need, we all have to look.
You don't know, you don't know what's gonna, there, uh, get Denny running around dumping on it or something. Uh, he can go to a lot of people, cause he likes to talk. Are we still on?
Well, they left him in there, out there. So, anyway, I. Then, we'll see, I guess.
Well, I, I think the size of the sign has to do with our character in my mind. You start letting great big signs and, um, you know, it's, it changes, yeah, it's, it's not preserving our character, you know, too big.
One of the things that we don't have here is any kind of like aesthetics standards to go by. It's really, um, best guess, uh, or consensus, maybe, if you will, um, about anything, whether it's the size of this type of a thing, or colors on a house, or.
But you know what? They don't in Augusta either, but they, they went through four plans for the new Dollar General before they accepted a plan that, that they felt that neighborhood could be out of building. You have that vote.
Yep.
That, that's a good point, though, um, here, because in the comprehensive plan, there's a recommendation about architectural styles.
Yeah.
I don't know how you get there, but, uh, cause I don't have any expertise in that, but, you know, particularly in the villages, you know, uh, um, uh, I think is what that was limited to, maybe, I, I can't quite remember, but, you know, I mean, potentially, we could've built that into this ordinance.
Yep.
I, I don't know how you do it, and, and, um, I don't know that Chris knows how, but Chris, from KB Cog, but.
It's a, it's a touchy subject, I mean, that, actually, going back to Freeport, and that's how, how McDonald's.
Yeah.
Ended up having the facade that it does.
Yeah, well, that kinda speaks to what you're using as example, you know, you press these companies, and they can come up with alternate designs, and Rite Aid has too, and a number of.
I mean, the planning board said, we can deny this based on the name of a term of ability. We don't feel that what you're proposing looks appropriate for the area.
Right.
That building had a flat roof, they made it put an A roof. They made it put a shingle roof, they made it put a vertical type, I mean, a horizontal type, um, siding, either wood or, or iron.
But I can say too that, um, where I lived in another state, um, they wrestled with the same sort of aesthetics or architectural, um, issues, and I don't know what they came up with the standards, but they, they, that town, they applied it everywhere, everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, um, they wanted the character of that town to be, um, promoted and maintained, wherever it might be, so. So, it did, so if you're looking in the town, you wouldn't see wildly different.
Right.
You know, construct or designs, you know? In the square, everything that was redeveloped met this, that look in the square.
Yeah.
I had this conversation with, um, Becky's cousin, who's a, well, he's a landscape architect, but he, places like, uh, Bowden College and wealthy people down in Cape Cod are his clientele kinda thing, and University of Texas is a client. And, and he, and he said it's a lot, his experience is, cause he tends to work with the architects that come up with those, it's easier when you have a community that has a real historical basis to, you know, roots to it, you know, that has a large historic district or something that's, looks historical, you know? Belgrade's kinda lost that in nineteen sixties already, you know?
Right, exactly.
Um, and even in the village, um, it. And even in the village, um, it, you know, it's nice, but I don't I don't consider it historical with the exception of the stone building and. You know, it 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 it's, you know, um, some of the, even a downtown gardener has more historical buildings than. It gives you a basis to start with, but.
Yeah, so that's the challenge, I think, that we face as a as a community going forward is is. We don't really have a an identity that says, oh, we're known for like this major thing. This is our theme, this is the thing we can, you know, stick a flag in the earth and say this is what we're about.
No, the only thing we're about really, I mean, is the lakes.
That's right, that that is our biggest identity is is the lakes. You know, I think if you were to think about other major towns or. Towns you visit in the United States, you could probably come up with five or six and say, oh, this town, you know, it's known for this. This other town, known for that, for Belgrade, it's the lakes, it's it's not necessarily constructs. Like buildings or something like that.
When you talk to biologists from Illinois Fish and Wildlife and they say what they know Belgrade for is all the, it's sort of the epicenter of exotic species.
Then then introduced by bucket biologists.
It's a little testing area. Whoops, geez, where'd the pike come from? Where'd the mud puppies come from, Kobe?
Yeah, right, 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 actually, it was the Alwais who were talking about, you know, that they may have accidentally introduced them.
Same with the pike.
Are they catching walleyes again some?
Did that? Oh, yeah, but they haven't recently.
I mean, the beauty of walleye is though that is one species you can exterminate. Because of their breeding habitat, unlike northern pike or, you know, they're like Alwais.
The water qual- the water up here isn't suitable for the walleye, so they can't reproduce, so. What's in there is just leftover from what was there. So I I think the alclinity of the water isn't high enough. For walleye to to really uh take off.
So they probably need more calcium in the water or something.
I assume the crappies must have been somehow stopped, I know the crappies in McGraw and Sam.
Sam and Northwest and uh. Uh East Pond. Great Pond, they're all through the chains, you know. So the biologists have done more playing around than anybody else. I mean, I remember meeting with, what's the guy, what's the head of them, um. Lives on the Taylor's Woods Road. He sat right there and bullshit at me, right to my face. And, you know, because I was trying to get on the dam committee. And, you know, one of my. Complaints was they were stocking at the boat landing with the dam being wide open. So I approached him. And I said, would you be willing to work with the dam committee on the stocking program? So we can shut the dams down, because when you're stocking at the boat land and the dams are wide open. The brown trout are just going right down into Long Pond, well, they can't stock Long Pond with brown trout. Right, so the story he come up with was, oh yeah, well, we had them all loaded up in the truck. And the truck went down, got stuck on that point road, that little camp road there, you know, uh. Anyways, yeah, so the truck got stuck there and I just told him to go dump them at the boat land, I didn't wanna lose them. Well, that truck must have got stuck for three years in the road. I live on the stream, I know when people are catching the brown trout, I walk across the boat landing and there they are going in a circle right at the boat landing, hundreds of them. So they were stocking Long Pond through Great Pond, because, you know, they just stocked it with um rainbows. While they had to go through the whole public meeting and the whole shebang, and that's what he told me, to stock a new species, you have to go through. A ton of paperwork, while they were getting around it by stocking right at the frigging boat land. Knowing they were gonna go down the stream and right into Long Pond.
You wanna see the rainbow right now, Wigsville's Dam.
Oh, really?
Walk out on the dam, you can see them, about that big, just swimming around.
I was I was really surprised, I went to one of those seminars they put on about that, and I was really surprised that. They're more tolerant of low oxygen, because the north basin of Long Pond is almost devoid of oxygen in August. And and apparently, they've historically competed okay with northern pike versus.
With the brown trout, and they're actually easier to catch than the brown trout, but the big thing is they'll eat the Alwais. See, the Alwais are actually wiping out the smelt population over there, it's not so much the pike, I mean, the pike aren't helping it.
That's exactly what they told.
But the Alwais are taking away the smelt over there, and that's the main feed for a salmon. They don't like the Alwais, even though an Alwais is a soft body fish. For some reason, I don't know if it's just too big or it's just not what they feed on.
Yeah, that's kinda interesting, I I never knew that.
And when they put the Alwais in, they put them in to feed the pike on Great Pond, and they weren't supposed to reproduce. While all of a sudden, boom, they reproduced.
So these Alwais reproducing in the lake, or they heading down through Long Pond down the river?
They're reproducing in all these lakes now, they're even in North Pond now.
That makes sense.
You go out there ice fishing, when there's clear ice, there's just. I wanna say a million, there's hundreds of thousands of Alwais frozen in the ice, anywhere from that big to that big. We're drilling ice fishing holes, ice holes, and if you're in the right spot on Crystal Springs. The Alwais are boiling right up in the hole.
Really?
You know what I found out the other day, I didn't know it, but you can, a lot of the lakes now are, I know. I guess maybe most all of Kennebec County or something, you can fish as soon as the ice comes in. Oh, so they had to wait till January, go over to like Minnehawke, now I know why we go on January first, there's no fishing there anymore.
Wow, they can't keep them.
What's that?
Not with trout.
Can't keep them, you're not even supposed to bring them through a hole, I don't think.
I don't know, I see on a lot of Facebook pictures, it's like people catching fish.
Only on certain ponds, they rerated some ponds, so like McGraw, you can keep them.
Yeah, that's where it's awesome.
Yeah, that's all stocked fish, they just come out of this, they put them in there and they want to keep them to catch them, because the water warms up so much in the summertime, they don't.
Yeah, I wonder how many, we're probably keeping Nick here on something he doesn't care about. The they put all those trout in these ponds in the springtime, I wonder what percentage of them get caught before they keel over and die. When the water warms up in the summer, you know, Salmon Lake or whatever, they dump a bunch of them in there, and by probably July. There's like, if you didn't catch them, and there aren't that many people fishing for them in the spring, you know, anyway. Should we do the minutes, or should we conclude the hearing?
If we have if we have minutes, yeah, we should do the minutes and then conclude the hearing, uh, yeah.
Should we conclude the hearing before we do the minutes?
Oh, I see, because then.
That was a formal hearing.
Yeah, yeah, let's conclude the hearing, and then we'll do the minutes and then wrap up our meeting. How's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Right, so let's get back to our. Meeting minutes, everybody has a copy, Craig give a copy?
Are we doing minutes before we conclude the hearing?
Oh, do, so we need a, do you wanna?
I make a motion, I don't know if we need a motion, or you just conclude that the hearing's over.
I I just did.
I second that, all in favor?
All right, so, meeting minutes. From December word. Any comments?
I have two, I think, down at the bottom of the last paragraph. Uh, the board decided to have a public meeting, I think that's supposed to be hearing, we had a hearing, right, not a meeting? Okay, and it's bored rather than barred on the next line. That was my only comments.
Craig, any any edits, comments?
The the only uh thing I had was a typo in the um first line of the first paragraph. The second sentence, the board thought, T missing, board thought there was a lot.
Oh, on mine, I have a T.
I do too.
I do too, you you got no T?
Let me look at the other one, maybe the other one's a five. Oh, this one does. Why I printed it at home? Anyway, it's good, and I do like the formatting, did a nice job on that, Nick.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thanks for pointing that out, because I um after our recommendations and then including them in the footer, so you have the date and the.
Quite a bit more businesslike.
It does, it does, and um, thank you, Swase, for categorizing with the new business and old business and keeping that. I think we're in good shape, so we have some some edits, you've captured what those were, anything else on these minutes from December word?
No, is now the time to, Nick, you didn't, weren't able to find anything out about the missing.
I just got an email from Mary, so I have some audio emails to know. So I don't know if it is the audio, but it could be the audio.
Cause she, I saw some email traffic and there was a recommendation or a question or a comment from her to say, look at something.
Is it the LiveScribe audio, something like that?
Okay.
So hopefully I understand.
All right, let's let's keep our fingers crossed and it would be good to get back to those other meeting minutes. So an entertaining mo- uh motion.
Make a motion that we approve the December fourth, two thousand sixteen, uh, planning board meeting minutes as as amended? What did I say, fourteen? Guess can't read, December first, yeah, yeah.
I'll second.
Any more discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much, question about minutes in general, and I haven't been out to the website in a couple weeks. Are you able to post these out there in an area that makes you watchable sense and people can have these? Have any, you been out to the website at all? No?
I have no.
Great job on you, you really helped me about helping revendicate the site, what I saw looked great. Thank you for posting these out there too, because that's that's very helpful. Let's call it a night.
I met this evening with Tony Otidie's wife. She's a medical marijuana caregiver. And she took a blank application, commercial development review, she wants to operate her business in the old bank, Scoville. Perfect, so at some point she'll be bringing that in.
And she's a caregiver?
Yeah, licensed caregiver.
Caregiver, okay.
What what does that actually entail?
She said it allows you to have, if I'm not mistaken, you have five regular patients that come in usually on a weekly basis. And then she said the sixth one is a rotator, he might come in this week and. Next week it could be somebody else, it's not, doesn't have to be a regular.
Oh, okay.
She explained that to me that way.
So it's sort of like a doctor's office?
Except you grow the product right there.
Okay. Now, why does that trigger the commercial development review ordinance?
Well, I, it's it's changing, it's changing use from a from a business occupancy to a. A medical marijuana facility. I'm thinking if I didn't send that to the planning board, they'd angry, somebody would angry.
Well, that part I understand, but um.
And it could be that after we look at it, we might say it doesn't apply, I guess.
Well, I I only raise it because it was business, it. I don't know what kinda traffic this would generate versus a bank or.
Six patients a week, basically, you know, when I may be wrong, she can explain it, maybe it's not grown there. Maybe that's just her business office. There is something about having to, you're allowed to have six plants per patient in, I think, three different various stages of growth. And there's something about the control that that there are standards for.
Right, which, you know, we can't get into, but um.
Who do we care, really, it's just they do their business.
Yeah, it's it's, you know, whether it's that or a doctor's office, it's sort of the same to us. Uh, I was just asking the question of how, since it's predeveloped and. Was a bank, was a construction office?
Maybe if it's her office, it wouldn't have to, if it's like a business office, but if it's a grow facility.
Yeah, I I'd have to look at the ordinance frankly, but I I was just asking.
So, anything else, Gary, for updates?
No, no word from Dollar General.
So I had briefly mentioned in, um, there was an email forwarded to me from um, from Carrie. From that guy in Rome, and you guys think.
He's the planning board chairman, I believe.
Yeah, or co-chairman or something? And um, so he he referenced, you know, he, I heard you guys have been doing something with that, was it wind power?
He must have saw something that talked about what we're putting in our commercial.
Yeah, there there was a story in the in the Sentinel, I know.
So that so that was just an email, he may have been inaccurate and you know that, but it made me think. Whether it's that ordinance or some other ordinance, like something to do with marijuana or something, I don't know. If other towns are tackling that with a separate.
Augusta just placed a moratorium.
I I actually have a little bit of insight into that secondhand, as you might guess, through my wife, cause she's been consulted by the select board. Do you know about this, Gary?
The select board?
Yeah. Um, and uh. By virtue of the fact that you went to a select board meeting for something else. But um, and so they're talking about it and um a moratorium of some sort. And, I mean, Becky's advice was, there's no need to rush, because. Besides, you know, the results having to be finalized, uh, then there's time built into the statute for. The Department of Agriculture developing its rules, that rulemaking's gonna take a lot of time, there might even be additional. Action by the legislature required to approve those rules, you might be talking a year, so. And you can do a moratorium for up to eighteen months, but you don't wanna do it too soon, or your eighteen months might run out before you develop your own ordinance. Or or make a decision about, you know, whether you wanna allow social clubs or all all it, you know, that you've read in the newspapers. I mean, that's all I know, but um. But, you know, I I said to her, well, interestingly enough, if some place like that wanted to establish and Belgrade didn't do anything else. We would review it under this ordinance.
Right, we would, right? Cause that's what we have. So, and I I just wanted to bring that up only because I haven't heard anything to say from a select person to say, hey, do you wanna consider, you know. Developing some other type of ordinance, so I hadn't, I just hadn't heard a thing, and I and I thought that was. Maybe a little bit unusual, given the high profile nature.
Well, um. Becky had suggested to them that it would be better if the select board did that themselves, because it was a really a public safety issue. I mean, that doesn't mean anything, but you know.
It's worth one recommendation.
Yeah, um, I mean, you know, it really comes down to, you know, does the town have a police department and how are you gonna? I mean, you're not gonna enforce it, right, you know, I mean, exactly, so.
Cause you got how much time left to do that?
Buy our firm.
Sixty percent of Gary's time is to remain open space.
The woods with a rifle.
Yeah.
Peter, if there's a moment, um.
Yeah.
Question that Rich and I were just discussing, um, there are a couple of still typos and like formatting, minor formatting things. I mean, they're not substantive, it's probably something that could be changed at any time, but I, I just wanted to know how, what your thoughts were on that. You know, it's stuff like spacing between sections and.
To me, something like that, I think we still have a realistic timeframe to be able to adjust those, right?
I would think we could fix up formatting, we, when we go to public hearing and final vote, we want this thing to be absolute, if you will, I think, so. I don't know whether the best thing to, I don't know what your, your issues are, George, but mine, I commented on, made marks on red. Cause I read through the thing in preparation for, I figured I better read it once anyway. Uh, and I marked it in red, and I think Nick can easily take my red comments and make the typo kind of change. They're, they're very, no, nothing really has to do with changing standards or whatever, but, for instance, do you have your copy right there? Let me show you a couple of things that.
One of the benefits of the new draft is I can ask this, what page do we go to?
Five, go to five first. This is really simple. Review criteria, at least in my copy, is actually on page eighteen instead of twenty. Development standards are on twenty instead of twenty-two and forty and stuff like that, so that's basically a very simple kind of thing. Or is yours different than mine? Do we all have the same copy?
So page, so page five.
Mine is administration and enforcement.
Right, that's what I had too.
Uh, go to review criteria. Is your review criteria on page eighteen or page twenty?
Uh, eighteen.
Okay, the table of contents is twenty, so, things like that.
Oh.
You know, they're minor, but we ought to.
Oh, 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 oh.
What it really should be or something.
So what, I think what you're saying is, is that by looking at the table of contents, the proper reference to whatever article we're talking about.
Yeah.
Might be off.
It's off by a page or two.
Okay.
And something like on page nine, the word business days is just stuck there. It doesn't, it, it just needs to go, because it doesn't, it, it's not part of the sentence, I think. I don't know whether Nick can put it down there when he was doing it, remember we were talking about business days one time?
Oh, right, right, right.
And somehow it got thrown up there, um, right there.
Yep, perfect. Is there something that you can, you can tackle for us?
Yes.
So, um.
Basically, well, it's the same thing, business days, business days, somehow got thrown in there, and I could just give mine to Nick, I don't know what George has.
I, I, I haven't gone through it, but I'll give you, I can give you an example of the kind of formatting stuff, so go to page thirty-three. And you'll see section thirteen kind of just floating there.
Right.
And the text really from the page, next page needs to be brought over, and that changes the page, pagination, so, you know, you need to do some of this stuff first. Before you amend the pages in the table of contents, but there's a couple of other things too where, and I'm guessing, you know, I. From my own experience, I know how this probably happened, it was, you know, like, except changes in, in, uh, uh, in the, uh, the markup feature there, you know, and. And it, the computer doesn't, it doesn't quite do it, you know, so, I, I don't know if I can give you an example quickly, but there's some places where the paragraph is. Um, hadn't been indented or, or something of that nature. It's all formatting is what I just happened to notice as I was going through this. What I, I, I didn't actually read it like Rich did, what I did, when I went through and I changed the page numbers on these, on that bulleted list we had put together. Because I thought, I thought we'd have a better turnout frankly, because it was that article in the newspaper. And, uh, and so I thought people would be asking, that, in the past, people tended to focus on these things, cause it was a prior handout. And that's just how I stumbled across it, but I could go through it, and if this works for you, Nick, and, and do what Rich did, and just highlight in red, you know. Some of the formatting changes, I think it'd be simple to correct.
That would be awesome. I, I'm, I'm thinking there's probably a page break on page thirty-three.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that kind of thing.
I'll give Nick mine. Give it back to me if you will, I'll put my name on it.
Great idea.
Cause I've got a couple of things that I just want to ask how we interpret something at some point, not, nothing you would change or.
Actually, um, yeah, I'll bring this into the office to you sometime, Nick, okay, does that work, okay?
Mine shouldn't take you more than ten minutes.
Cause it, you know, if it doesn't, if something doesn't look like right to the public, they, you know, some, some people will infer from that, well, maybe there's substantive errors too.
Right, right, you cast it out. All right, I think, I think that's it, nine o'clock. We're done.
We can't go any longer.
No.
So the ordinance is about that, isn't it?
So you've been fishing yet?